Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting for the Daly City Library Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 20, 2018. I'll call the meeting to order. Shall we stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. Welcome back. All right. May we have roll call, please?
You may have roll call. Trustee Bell Mayo?
Present.
Trustee Lex?
Here.
Trustee Chubunka?
Here.
Vice President Logarta?
Present.
President Devera?
Present.
Thank you.
All right. I hope everyone had a chance to look at tonight's agenda. And if there are no updates, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second that.
Seconded.
All right. Opposed? Okay. And for the minutes from our last meeting on Tuesday, October 16, 2018, is there a motion to move?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Michelle, second the motion?
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say that. Opposed? All right. Thank you. Okay. We are going to go straight to the agenda and the Director's Report. Shayla, did you want to bring up the policies with regards to the new technology lending policy as well as the revised computer user policy?
Absolutely. Thank you. So with the very generous donation that we received, or grant that we received last week from the Daly City Public Library Associates, we will have technology to lend. This is new to us, but it's not at all new to other libraries in the area. And so based on what other libraries had done, there wasn't a complete consensus on everything, but we took lessons that they learned in circulating technology and have drafted a policy. This policy would be something that anyone borrowing the technology would need to sign. I'd add a signature line on this, and then we would retain that while they keep the materials out. So the items in question right now are, it's going to be Chromebooks and Wi-Fi hotspots that get checked out for taking home for a one-week circulation period, and then laptops that would be used, checked out, but for use only within the facility itself. This is similar to what San Bruno does, and they found that that works well. The laptop, the price point on the laptop is much higher, and so we didn't want to, one, obviously lose something on that value, but also we didn't want to burden somebody with the potential for paying a replacement cost if something should have happened to it.
Right.
So it just expands our offerings of public computers within the library, which is helpful, especially at places like Westlake where there are maybe fewer computers that are needed during some peak periods. And it also, they'll be a little bit less locked down technology-wise, so it should, if something is maybe not working on our much, much older public computers, these newer laptops hopefully will be able to work with it. You know, things like Acrobat files and things like that. So you can see, there's, it covers both the in-library use and the one-week checkout. One notable restriction that we're proposing is that we check out only to adults at this time. They do check out to juveniles at some of the other libraries. Based on, especially the traffic at two of our libraries with after-school, we were concerned because the children don't necessarily, they're not developed in terms of responsibility and making sure that the item gets returned, and I'd hate to see them leave it out on a table and someone nefarious come and take it and then their parents get a bill. So in order to prevent something like that, that's what we've proposed at this time. We can always loosen it up later if that seems appropriate.
However, Shayla, a parent, if a parent was there with a child and the child wanted to, then they can check out.
The parent could check it out on behalf of their child, yeah. And then the other thing that we don't typically require is photo ID at the time of checking out. Usually the library card is considered to be, you know, proof of identity, but for something of high value like this, we thought it's to protect the library account of the user. The in-library-use-only items would be checked out on an hourly basis. The three-hour time limit is based on what is allowed on the public computers. So it should be a sufficient amount of time for people doing specialized things, like sometimes people are doing online traffic school or the food handler's test, which can take them longer than the amount of time that they might get on the other computers. But isn't, wouldn't allow one person to dominate it all day. We do only have enough of these with the grant funds to place them at, two at each library and then one at Bay Shore.
Okay.
So there's not many of those. And then the fines and fees, we had to select amongst the available options within our computer system, so that's why they're set the way that they are set. There's essentially a low, medium, and high level, and these are the medium levels. And then the loss or damage will be the replacement cost of the material itself.
Okay. Okay. It seems pretty straightforward. I'm not very savvy with regards to policies, but when I read this, it seems pretty straightforward and reasonable for the user and also for the library staff, so I'm good with it. I don't know if anybody else has any input with regards to the...
I do know that they did have issues getting particularly the hotspots back in time, and so we will be checking, monitoring those, and if they are overdue, we will be simply just remotely switching them off, so hopefully...
And yeah, I like that you are able to do that.
Yeah.
So that things get returned back appropriately.
I have a couple of questions. So when you say checkout to adult cardholders, would it be possible to just give an age rather than say adult?
Over eighteen, yeah.
Absolutely.
That's a good idea.
You know, I mean, that way you've got something very specific and nobody's going to say, "Well, I'm an adult."
So be, yeah, be specific with the age, yeah. Eighteen and over. Or over eighteen. Depends on how you want to...
Okay.
And then, I was a little confused, under borrowing technology devices may be checked out, must present a government-issued photo ID. I thought you just said they could present a library card in lieu?
So that when somebody borrows other materials, as you know, as an avid borrower, they don't need to show their photo ID. They show their photo ID to acquire the card, but once they have the card, they just use their card to check out. This was to add an extra layer of security so that somebody couldn't potentially use someone else's card fraudulently.
So you want both?
Exactly.
Okay. So that's not clear to me. It might say must have a library card and photo, government-issued photo ID?
Well, if they don't have their card with them, they can use the ID in lieu of the card. They just can't use the card in lieu of the ID.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
So the government-issued ID supersedes all.
Yeah. And we do that now if you forgot your card at home.
Yeah.
And you have ID, we'll just look you up.
Okay.
Is anybody using any sort of a deposit system when checking these things out?
I have not encountered that at all. In fact, I would say this is definitely on the side of being, you know, a more secure approach to it.
That is a good question, though, because it is a big-ticket item, Bill, like, you know, and...
Well, the other thing that occurred to me is that it might be difficult to collect in some cases.
Right, exactly.
Fines or, you know.
Which is why we have very few.
The cost of the item if they lose it or break it.
But I also see it as cumbersome.
Well, we will, we haven't actually purchased the checkout items, and we will be, one of the main criteria we're going to be looking at is cost, not just so that we can get more of them, but also so we aren't burdening people. As it is now, I think people probably aren't aware, but those book-on-tape, book-on-CD sets can, most of them are $110 or $120 each. So it isn't that uncommon for somebody to end up owing a couple hundred dollars if they've lost items. So this will, this will be a little bit higher, but it shouldn't in and of itself be completely out of alignment with other bills that they may receive.
Other big-ticket items, okay.
I have a question. Isn't that, because the items, isn't that covered by insurance if in case damage, you know, the device?
So if, this actually came up, not with anything like this, but just with books, if you have homeowner's or renter's insurance or car insurance and something should happen, then you would pay, you can pay the library for the lost materials, and the library can provide you with a bill to be reimbursed by your insurance.
Over the claim.
Should your insurance be willing to do that?
Should they?
Interesting. Got it.
Interesting.
The "should" is the operative word.
Right.
Yes, in the unfortunate incident that came up recently, they did not.
Yeah, because I mean, the insurance, because, you know, later on, they might, you know, ask clients, if it is covered by the insurance, why would I pay? Those kind of things that may arise later on, so...
Does the user have to return it?
So the item has to be returned to a staff person at a staff desk in one of the four libraries in Daly City, yeah. So not, don't drop it in the book drop. We actually got a ukulele in the book drop the other day.
Oh, wait. Oh, my goodness.
But that is an item like this where people are told that they do need to return in person, and so as you can see, they don't always follow instruction.
Wow. That's pretty crazy. But let's say there's a husband and wife, and the wife checks out the tablet or the computer, can her husband bring it back for her?
Absolutely, yeah.
Does the Technology Lending Service Agreement address any of the computer use and internet use policies?
It references very openly...
Because we talk about the computer and...
Yeah. At the end of the usage section, it says the computer use and internet use policies apply. So particularly, well, if they're using the wireless internet within the library, they do have to agree to that policy when they log on to it each and every time.
Oh, okay. So it's presented and they have to affirm.
Yeah. And then with the Wi-Fi hotspot, the service provider has their own, you know...
Use agreement.
Usage agreement.
Okay.
In this case, it is, I believe, going to be Sprint.
Okay. Nice.
So I guess the only change we're contemplating is putting an age rather than adult?
Yeah. So far, unless there's any other comments?
Question? I'm not sure if this is a dumb question, but no, you get to take a tablet or whatever home. Is the library then wiping out all the search data afterwards so that...
Yes, they'll be completely reset. And our public computers at this time also do that. They, when you log off, they reboot their, they have software on them that causes complete empty.
Well, I know we've got restrictions at the library, but outside, who knows?
Yes, it should, I should say, it should. Completely reset.
And they can't put any files of their sort on there. They can't download applications on those computers and bring, put their files on there.
Yeah, no, most important...
Kind of USB or something to...
Yeah, no, most important is what are they looking at?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Will kids get it or...
I know.
Do kids do it? The whole thing. Okay.
All right.
Well, with the amendment to the age rather than adult, I move that we approve the technology lending policy.
I'll second that.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, for some of you, I know this is the first policy you voted on. So typically, if you've gone through our policies, there's a lot of stuff, this is a new one, and the action we typically seek is endorsement of the policy.
Okay.
You don't want a motion?
I heard your motion, but I just wanted to make sure everybody else understood what you were voting on.
Yes, yes.
I'll third it.
So, so the motion carried, and now it is going to be an official policy added.
It is official.
All in favor, please?
Oh, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Now it's official.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we got that.
Thank you so much.
Okay. And do we want to talk about, did we have to discuss this also as this was...
Yes. So the second item is the computer use policy. This is, as you can see, very minor changes, and the changes were made to reflect some liberalization of our offerings with the computers, just based on fluctuations in demand. And we were able to extend the daily time limit, keeping the session time limit still at an hour, so if there are busy times, that shouldn't impact it. And then also increasing the time allotment for guests who don't have cards. There are people who either forgot their card or for whatever reason aren't able to keep their card and gun standing, or may have concerns about their privacy and they prefer to use a guest pass. So this is just memorializing those changes.
Okay.
And you can, you can see at the bottom of the final page, it's got all of the times that... It has been reendorsed with modification.
Is there any particular reason that a library card is not required for express internet station use?
The, they need a library card or a guest pass, so you can't just walk up to it. But for people who don't have a library card, they're able to easily obtain a guest pass from staff, and it was to accommodate people who, for whatever reason, didn't have cards, and we wanted to make sure that they still had access to that service.
Anybody else have any input or concerns regarding the computer use policy? I'm just looking over the last page.
I've got just a couple of nitpicky suggestions.
Aye, Bill.
On the reverse side, under general rules...
Yes.
The last full line where it says is not liable for any losses, there would be any loss or for losses rather than any losses. Does that make sense? As in any loss being seen as...
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
And then number three, under general rules, library staff are authorized. And then under prohibitions, item D, library procedures, I'm just curious, will be prohibited or may be prohibited? What was your thinking there?
This was the existing language, so I did not...
Will is, you know, very...
And it's probably not accurate. I think May would probably cover that better.
Okay. That gives discretion to the staff.
Absolutely. And we have had, you know, there's always gray area type situations.
Yeah. Okay. Looks good to me.
Yeah, looks good.
Well, with those changes, I move that we accept or endorse the computer use policy as presented.
I'll second that. Shayla?
Thank you so much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Such a good mentor.
It's official.
Okay.
No ambiguity.
All right. Okay, anything else for Director's Report?
No. We turn over the meeting to the trustees for the trustees' report at this time.
Okay, all right. Well, then we'll move right into the trustees' report and dive right into our advocacy with the four pillars and creating awareness. The last time we met, the topic was team building with our commissioners, and I did have a nice talk with both Joseph and Shayla about how we can get this moving forward. And I think what we can do is get this task on the calendar sooner than later by, he had, actually Joseph had mentioned about doing the Brown Act, having another meeting for those who haven't actually sat in one of the Brown Act meetings to actually...
Or those who have and want a refresher.
Or those who have and want a refresher, exactly. This might be an opportunity that will get us to what our plans are as far as having all the commissioners and the trustees come together. This might be an opportunity to do that sooner than later and put it on the calendar. And then maybe create, having some kind of a mixer or reception afterwards where we can actually mingle and talk to all of our fellow commissioners and trustees. So with that said, I think we just need to talk to, or I just need to coordinate with Joseph, maybe Rose, and whoever other council members, I guess, to...
Right. Well, typically, the city attorney is the person who facilitated that.
Right.
There may, you know, we're going to have at least two new commissioners, it looks like, going forward with the results of the election, creating a couple vacancies on existing commissioners. So I think maybe wait for the commission vacancies to be filled, and then that way we'll have brand-new commissioners as part of this workshop.
Okay.
I'm just curious, Joseph, do you mean commissioners or trustees?
I'm thinking specifically the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
Two members of the planning commission appear to be headed toward elections, so they would step down from the planning commission.
Right, right, okay.
And so it's at least, yeah, two, two...
Yeah, I wasn't connecting those dots.
Yeah. So he's trying to see if we can wait until we get the new people in. So, yeah. So, yeah, and I don't anticipate, and I had mentioned this to Shayla and to Joseph, I don't anticipate this happening until the beginning of the new year, if anything. So we'll wait for a little bit of time. And with the holidays coming up, it is, it is pretty tight.
Yeah, it's going to be difficult, but I know you want to get the ball rolling.
Yeah. So, so yes, that's a good idea. So, but we'll keep that on the calendar moving forward and keep communicating about how we can get that finalized in black and white on the calendar. And then with the coffee with the trustees at the local branches, Shayla had mentioned that she could reach out on our behalf to talk to the branch managers to see how we can also get that going as well, and identifying the dates of, what dates would be good as far as identifying specific dates that work best when there are kind of more a variety of users coming through, not just adults, not just children, but a mixed batch. So that way, when we do talk with them, we can get a variety of kind of ideas or thoughts from the patrons coming through.
Different types of patrons, yeah.
Right, through the, through the library. Sorry, I was trying to remember something I was going to add to that, but, and then once we pin down kind of an idea of, this will work with the branches and the branch managers are on board, it's identifying then what, sorry, what, identifying what that's going to look like. I don't think they've ever had this done before. And I've spoken with, I'm looking at her name, at Westlake, Karen, thank you. She was really excited about the idea when I had mentioned it to her. She says, "We've never had anything done like this before." And I said, "I know, and I don't know what that's going to look like." So, but I think that if I communicate with Joseph and Shayla a little bit more with idea and kind of narrow it down to what our goals are, I think this will be a great opportunity. So, but we just need to communicate that directly with the branch managers so that they're in the loop.
Absolutely.
And then we have their full support, and we move forward with that. So again, we need to discuss that a little bit further, and then we can get something on the calendar. If you guys have ideas or thoughts, please let me know. I'm just kind of brainstorming on my own, but I really, you know, I would love your input. So if you feel that there are other ways about going, doing this project, please just let me know, and I'm open to suggestions on that.
Well, when I did the financial literacy event at John Daly, it was a Monday, and it was like in the afternoon, around like three, three to five, I would say, we were there. And we did get a lot of students, but we got a lot of, you know, other patrons as well, like approaching us, just wanting to see what this was about. So I imagine this probably would be on a weekday, right? A lot of people tend to, even if their children are using it, they're right there with them, reading and whatnot, so...
And Karen said at the Westlake branch, she actually mentioned a Saturday in the afternoon is really good.
Is a good time.
Because parents are not at work.
Parents are going there.
And it's actually beneficial because it, we will have a consent form for the parents to sign to allow us to interview their kids or themselves as well. Anybody needs a consent form to be able to use their photo or their verbiage, but...
Release form.
If we have students coming in by themselves, it's nice to have their parents there as well so that they can sign off right away, right away. Otherwise, we can have them take it home with them, hoping that they'll return it back, because they'll be excited, like, "I want to be on a video," and, you know, want to bring the form back. But of course, we'll, we'll take good notes when we do do this and meet with the students to take their name and phone number so we can at least reach out to them and remind them that, you know, if you want to be on this, on this montage, that, you know, please have the form sent in so we can, we can allow you to be on there, so. So that's an idea. So we could look into Saturdays. Saturdays are always good.
Saturdays are good.
Yeah, yeah. And again, this probably won't happen until after the new year, so just as an FYI. It would be nice to have it done earlier, but it's, the holidays are creeping up, so I know people's schedules are quite tight during that time, and we need to work out the logistics, so it takes some time to do that. Any other comments about the coffee with trustees? Anybody?
That's a great idea.
Okay.
Let's do it.
All right, Marcel, on board. Okay. The last one I want to bring up with regards to creating awareness is the Talking Points bookmark. Shayla, do you happen to know how that, that bookmark is, sorry, I just, I just realized when I came over, I was like, "I could ask about the bookmark."
Well, they were distributed, and I have not received a request for a refill. I will, I will ask everyone to check their supplies.
You wouldn't mind? I'm just, I'm just curious. We worked so hard on that thing. I'm just curious to see.
So I, when I visited Bay Shore today, I saw it, but I didn't even chime in to say, hey, how's it going?
Yeah, oh, no, no, that's fine.
But I did see him. I took a picture of it.
Oh, you did?
To see, like, you know, to show you all where the placement...
She's like, "It's really there."
It's really there, but I didn't get to chime in, yeah.
No, that's all right. I didn't mean to throw you off. Both Shayla...
Thanks, thanks.
But it's there. We haven't heard any comments about it, so I figure it's all good.
We have not, no, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, moving along under communications. So this is my chance to check with everybody to see if they've done their homework, visiting the libraries, and I'm, first on this, I have Bill that was supposed to be visiting Sermonte.
Which I did.
Very good. There you go.
And I met with library staff, you know, it's always pleasant to have those conversations. Shayla helped set it up, so thank you for that. The most surprising part of the discussion to me was a concern expressed by the library staff about the viability of operating four branches as we continue to move into more fiscally difficult times. And we all know that we really have four branches, but in essence, only three libraries in terms of hours of operation. So there's some real sensitivity and, you know, I think actual forward-thinking among the staff on that, that item. So there's some real sensitivity and, and, you know, I think actual forward thinking among the staff on that, that item. It might be worthwhile to explore that option and perhaps other options that we can come up with in the future. I wouldn't ever give up on trying to maintain four branches because they serve distinct parts of our community. And the ones that have the fewest number of hours perhaps are in areas of greatest need in a way. So it's a very, very difficult topic to consider, but, you know, the staff are definitely thinking about the options that the library is going to face and the conditions we're going to have to grapple with in the future.
That's true, that's true. Thanks for sharing that, Bill. You know, it's an ongoing battle and I-
It's a difficult topic.
Yeah, and you hear it from all, all branches, so. Angela?
Yeah.
You have Bay Shore?
So I had the opportunity to visit Bay Shore this afternoon. I spoke with Josh and Jenny. And, you know, and I actually had an opportunity to speak to a patron. I actually had trouble finding the entrance, and I was like, "I thought you could go through."
Oh, so you parked down below?
Yeah, I parked down below, yeah, and, and she was so sweet, and she goes, "Let me show you where it is because it's pretty tricky." So she walked and of course I was winded and, and so I go, "Oh, you know, thank you so much for using this library, what does it mean to you?" And she goes, "Well, I live close by," she lives on Midway, which is wa- walking distance. And this is a great place for me, she has five grandchildren. So she goes and it's, it's almost like an oasis for her, right? She goes, she climbs the stairs, she, you know, gets recipe books, and she says that the staff is like soul-friendly to her all the time. So, you know, that kind of gives us a understanding of what that means for that community, right? And then I proceeded to speak with Josh, Josh has been around eighteen years. And, you know, as I was speaking to him and I was actually observing him, you know, with patrons, he's so knowledgeable and so engaged and so passionate, you know, with what he does. And it's really compelling, it really is. And, you know, I said, you know, "I'm a trustee member, I want to help you. And we're going to do what we can to help you, but in the end, they need funding, right? They need funding, they need us to speak on their behalf." He said he's spread out pretty thin because he is at Ceramonti. And he is now at Bay Shore two times a week. Sarah is now at John Daly three times a week, right? So that kind of, it's difficult for her to run her children's library services. But, you know, I was, I was, in talking to him, it's, and I was like, "Oh, can you tell me a compelling story? Like, let's, let's hear what you've got, eighteen years, I want to hear it." And he goes, "No," he was like, "I have so many." But I will tell you that he used to run the children's storytime. And he was like, "I used to run the children's storytime." And what's pretty cool is a page ended up working for us for about a year. So, you know, he, he was telling them stories and then they came and circled back. And then he told another story of a family that came in and they would, they would check out so many books, like fifty at a time. And then she'd be like, "Whoa, like, goodness," right? But he remembers that family and they circled back because they remembered him. And now one of her sons is in medical school and they have the library to thank for that because those were like resources that helped the Daly City community. So, you know, we exchanged stories and I, I told him, you know, what I, I grew up at the one, which is now the museum, right? John Daly, and I was like, "Oh my God, my house is so chaotic," but I would go and I would get my encyclopedia and, you know, so we, you know, there was definitely. So, you know, we, what I said to him is, you know, "We're here to help you. But we need to hear these stories so that we can convey and be the liaison for you all." And I think we had this conversation, we're going to keep on hearing the same things, right? We're going to hear the frustrations, we're going to hear how things are spread out pretty thin. But, and we're going to also hear the greatness, like the compelling stories. So, yeah, that's my report. You know, I gave them my information, I let them know, you know, we're going to try to help them the best we can, so.
And specifically with Bay Shore, and as Bill mentioned earlier, you know, we have branches that are dedicated to the various parts of Daly City. And Bay Shore is one of them, and that's the, what do they call it, the south part, is that the-
Is that Southern Hills?
Southern Hills, Southern Hills. Yeah, it's Southern Hills, yeah, where they, they're really focused for that area. And it's, it's just the way that where it's situated is so difficult for those residents out there to be able to get to that location.
It's so dark, it's so dark, yeah, it's very, like, I was like, I'm a little scared, like, navigating to get to this place, yeah.
And so with the patron that you spoke with, because she's on that side, it is convenient for her to be able to go there. So it's, it's where the, the, I think where it falls is trying to get those people in the Southern Hills to get, to get over that hill and come over to where that branch is, was where the difficulty lies for the patrons. And I think Jessica had mentioned that to me when I met with her a few months back, and she's just like, "I just don't know how to get them over here." It's like, "I just want to go over there and pull them over and just say, you know, or bring a bus around and have a sign and say, 'Come follow me,' you know, to the library." And that is her, well, that was her frustration, is trying to reach out to those people and getting them to come in, so. But, yeah, okay. Well, thanks for sharing on that one. And then I actually went to Westlake and had a nice meeting there with Karen. And again, it's kind of the same story, the frustration with, you know, trying to accommodate the patrons with the hours. But she actually attended a workshop, I'm not sure if you know of the workshop that she-
The Future of Libraries.
Yeah, the Future of Libraries. She talked, she talked very highly of it. And I told her, you know, "Just kind of give me a brief idea of what that was like to attending it." And she said she was very enlightened, but there was one focus that she had in there that really brought to my attention. And that it is something that we have to acknowledge, and that is the language we use for the libraries and how we communicate what the libraries are. Because it's a new time, technology is, is kind of the current forecast right now with the libraries.
Resource, yeah.
Yes, and so she said, "The way we talk about the libraries is we have to change our language. We don't just tell them that we have books and, you know, and there's activities going on." We have to really tweak it a little bit to accommodate people who are using the computers.
Right.
To thought applications.
Yeah.
Or to be able to, you know, learn how to use Excel or Word and inside the libraries because the computers are there, they don't have computers available. So it's, it's a matter of tweaking the way we advertise what is available at the libraries and how we can accommodate the end user. And so she brought that to my attention, and I was like, "That's something that I really have to look into." And so she said that it was actually taped, but for some reason, she said, "A portion of it didn't, it got distorted or something."
The best portion of it, yeah.
Yeah, so she said she was going to try and see if we can get a portion of that, maybe we can all kind of watch and, and listen to what they had to say. So as soon as I hear from somebody about it, I'll let you guys know. But it might be interesting to just, to listen to.
No, it's, it's a good reminder to, you know, we tend to talk amongst ourselves.
Right.
And we use, you know, the word "program" a lot, which is not a particularly impactful word.
Right, right.
No, she reported back from that conference, it sounded very-
Yeah, it was very, it was, it was nice to, to hear about that, so, really enjoyed that. And like I said, she's really on board with Coffee with Trustees and trying to get that video developed. So she's, she says, "Keep her posted," so I said, "I told her to keep her posted." Marcel, how are you?
I did not get a chance, so probably, you know, by next month.
No problem, no problem.
Because of my, because of my season with my-
I know you are busy.
Healthcare, Monday to Friday.
No worries, titanium. And Lynn?
I don't have a family, family, family somewhere, I know.
No, it's okay, it's okay, it's okay, one, two, just, welcome back. Nice to have you back.
Thank you, thank you, good to be back.
Okay, so moving on to, with, with regards to communications, the video creation with testimonials. I've had the conversation with, with Joseph about how we can prepare these videos and get release forms prepared. And there are many logistics behind all of this, trying to find a videographer, determining how we can get questions prepared for, for the patrons that we want to talk to, determining how many people we're going to interview and how long these videos are going to be. So those are the kind of logistic things that we will be in communication with, all of us, we should be all in communication with. But that's just kind of the things, checkpoints that we have to go through when creating these, these videos. So just as an update for you guys. Okay, so we have, the next on my agenda is the community involvement. So with that said, did I miss something here? Sorry. Community involvement. I think I don't have any updates with that. Does anybody have any community involvement updates?
Attend anything?
Did anything? No? No?
No.
Okay, I'm going to just check that out, no updates. Okay, and fundraising, I don't have any updates at this time. I'm kind of focused on trying to get these videos prepared so that we can then lead to fundraising, so hopefully that will go. Anybody have any updates on that? Throwing the floor open. No? Okay, checking that off. DCPLA report. The DCPLA board meeting was held on October twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, at the Ceremony Library Community Room. And I think there were a few updates, one of them, which is the website is up now. Mike Sedik was the one who updated it. So Susan had mentioned to have a look, if you guys have a chance to take a look at the DCPLA website. It's been up and running. The executive director's report, updates with regards to funding. The Atkinson Foundation grant was approved for five thousand dollars towards the laptop checkout. However, the Carl Geller and Celia Berta Geller Foundation grant is still pending for the additional laptops that they wanted to purchase, so that's still pending. And then on Tuesday, November thirteenth, the DCPLA presented the grants to the Daly City libraries at the city council meeting. I was there as well as Bill and Shayla and from the DCPLA, Tom was there, Pauline, Susan.
And I watched it.
You watched it? Am I missing somebody else?
A new executive director.
Oh, yes, Victoria, Victoria was there, yeah. So that was a good turnout. And these grants, which were totaled, a total of thirty thousand dollars, which actually brought the total for the year at two hundred thousand dollars to support-
Not for the year.
I think it's life.
All time.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, for the, yeah, thirty thousand for the, for the, no, thirty thousand?
Since inception, and that's six, six years.
Okay, 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 got it, got it, got it. Okay, there you go. So that was, okay, two hundred thousand for, okay, from the DCPLA members, businesses and foundations that gave support to the library programs, that provided equipment and other critical resources. Thanks for the clarification. That would have been nice for the year.
Two hundred thousand dollars a year would be awesome.
Thanks, DCPLA. Okay, so there you go. Okay, and then on November sixteenth, there was the Twenty-Sixth Annual Project Read Trivia Challenge that was held at the South San Francisco Convention Center. And Terry Sedik, Victoria Mugbilang and myself were on the trivia panel. And we got seventeen out of thirty on the first round. It was actually quite difficult this time around. The questions were quite difficult, so. And I wasn't the only one that said that, so I'm not just saying it because for the sake of cop out. It was difficult, but we had a great time. Shayla was there and she was-
I was a scorekeeper for-
For CH, El Camino High School.
El Camino High School key club.
There you go.
They had a, they had a team that didn't quite make it, make your score, but-
That's all right, right, that's all right.
They were very enthusiastic, yeah.
It was a good night all around, great food, great people, and the trivia was fun, so it was, it was good, it was good. And Victoria was really excited about it. So she said, "I'm already signed up for next year," I'm like, "Oh, great, okay."
They will be thrilled.
All right, and then next on the agenda is the board retreat scheduled for Tuesday, November twenty-seventh, at the Lake Merced Golf Club from nine to two. And if interested, please contact Susan Brizenden-Smith. Bill, are you attending?
I am attending.
Okay, perfect, okay. If anybody else would like to attend, Bill's attending. I'm not going to be here, unfortunately, I'm traveling, but if you guys are interested. When is it? On Tuesday, November twenty-seventh. It's actually their board meeting date, but they're going to actually have that retreat. And then, what else was there? Jackie Spear will have an author talk reception on her book, Undaunted, to be held on December three, two thousand and eighteen, at the Colma Community Center. And they will also be hosting the welcoming of Victoria Mugbilang as the new director for DCPLA, as well as the farewell to Susan Brizenden-Smith. So this is going to be a full house, so if you would like to attend, please RSVP to info@dcpl.org or you can call them at six five zero two two four two three five six. And we'll be there. And announcements and communications. We have the Daly City Public Library Food for Fines, which is being held between November first through December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. You can drop by your local Daly City library to donate food and in return, the library will waive your late fines. How cool is that? If you don't want to have any library fines, you need to take care, if you have any, if you don't have any library fines, you need to take care of, you are still welcome to donate to the food drive. We would appreciate your kindness and generosity.
I'd just like to add, the, the city and the library along with it will be closed during the period between Christmas and New Year. So if you would like to participate in Food for Fines at a Daly City library, you will need to do that by the twenty-second.
So the twenty-second, okay.
However, the neighboring libraries are also participating and they will be open during that time, so you can, you can always go there. If you want to make a donation at Ceramonti, there, there are regular bins, but if you do need to have fines waived, you'll need to come to the desk and speak with a staff person to make sure that it gets applied to your account.
That's right, yeah, thanks for clarifying that. And then speaking of schedules for Thanksgiving, so you guys are going to be closed Thursday.
Thursday.
And Friday.
Friday and Saturday.
Okay. Just for people in case they wanted to swing by the library during the break.
I understand that the San Mateo City Library is open on Friday.
Okay, okay. And you had a couple of other announcements too, Shayla?
I do, I think, I think, oh, maybe not everyone is aware. One of our team has moved on to new and exciting adventures at another library. So librarian to Jessica Diaz has accepted a position elsewhere. She will be super, super missed and they are very, very lucky to get her. So we have a vacancy and as Angela alluded to, so we have people who are filling in. So Joshua Reese is actually our collection services manager, he does our cataloging and a lot of our ordering and processing. So, and he has added on to that, two days a week, he is managing and staffing, staffing and managing the Bay Shore Library. And Sarah Spence, our youth services librarian, is staffing and managing the John Daly branch three days out of each week. So it's, it's quite a lot, there's other things that have kind of just been shelved around and everyone's doing their very best to cover it. We, we're of course working on filling the position, it did open November first. And it's, we're accepting applications through December tenth. I did check earlier today, we had eight applicants, although they're, they haven't been checked to make sure they're legitimate. But hopefully, we'll, we'll get even more than that before it closes. So that's what's going on, so we're a little down staff. And then also, not news, news related to us, but our neighbors, the San Mateo County Library, JPA, governing board has approved elimination of all fines on San Mateo County library items. So this, this will have some impact on us and might create some confusion and a little friction. They are implementing it early January and it's an automated thing, so- So if you are, say, a person who places holds and you get an item from San Mateo County Library, the fees, the late fines just wouldn't apply to those items.
Interesting, okay.
At this time, they are the only library doing that for, for all, all patrons. Of course, we are not charging juveniles and, and they are also, they have a program for senior citizens as well.
Okay. There will be some confusion there.
There will, there will be confusion. The, the county has offered to provide, you know, some kind of an FAQ so that staff are consistent in communicating and clearing things up with people, so. That's something on the horizon.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Well, I just wanna take this time to thank the library staff. I know it's difficult and you have to spread yourselves thin, so keep the morale up. You guys are doing awesome.
Everybody jumped right in.
Thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. I know, I know their heart is in a good place and it's tough, but, but we're here to support them, so. Okay, all right. Is there anything else with regards to announcements or communications, anyone? Okay, so agenda building for our next meeting. So we'll do the updates on the Brown Act meeting and mixer event. Hopefully, we can get something more concrete for that. As well as the updates on communication with the library branch managers regarding the Coffee with Trustees. I'll continue working with Shayla on that one. Updates on pinning down a videographer. Joseph, can I work with you on that?
I can do that.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Get some updates on that. And then, oh, I forgot to make mention about video equipment. We had talked about that.
That's also part of it.
Yeah, so let's, we'll, we'll talk about that.
I'll, I'll, I'll give you an update on those too.
Perfect, okay, great. Is there anything else for next meeting that we need to add? Anybody? I think you got it covered. Yeah? Okay. Do we have any public comments?
Hello?
Okay. All right, well, happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Have a safe and enjoyable and don't eat too much. Adjourning this meeting.